All right, I call the May 8, 2024 Planning Commission meeting to order at this time. Can I get roll call?
Chair Andrew Carr.
I'm here.
Nicole Hendricks.
Here.
Rob Heberlein.
Here.
Matt Constantine.
Here.
Sam Skoll.
Here.
Yana Semenova.
Here.
Jennifer Willard. Thank you.
Join me in Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is a time, I take off my glasses, sorry. This is a time that citizens have an opportunity to address the Planning Commission regarding any item that is not already scheduled for a formal public hearing or a public work session tonight. Therefore, if any member of the audience either here in City Hall or via Zoom would like to speak about any matter of concern, please raise your hand or send a message to the recorder using the Zoom chat function so that we may hear from you now. If you have not already, please fill out a testimony card and give it to the clerk. Also, please state your name and address for the record or state that your address is as provided on the testimony card. Please come to the podium when you are called forward or unmute yourself on Zoom when the clerk requests. Is there anyone who would like to testify at this time?
I currently have no attendees on Zoom.
Very good. For consideration of minutes, the April 10, 2024 meeting, Planning Commission minutes were previously distributed. Are there any corrections to the minutes? I'm seeing all a bunch of head nods. Hearing no correction, the minutes are approved as distributed. That takes us to next agenda item, which is a work session for Frog Pond East and South Implementation Development Code. This work session is a chance for the Planning Commission to gain additional understanding of and provide guidance on ongoing legislative projects prior to a public hearing. As a courtesy, the Planning Commission will, as time permits, allow for limited public comment on the topic after staff has presented their report for the commission's purpose of continuing to understand the project. However, it should be noted that this is not a public hearing and any participants are encouraged to participate in the future public hearing for legal standing. At this time, I call for city staff to present information they have prepared for the work session. City staff, please present.
Certainly, thank you Chair Dan Polly, Planning Manager. And one day I will not be here talking about Frog Pond. That day is not too far off. But meantime, I'm still here talking about Frog Pond. So tonight, I have some follow-up information as was outlined in the staff report related to variety standards, particularly some thresholds of how things are measured. I look forward to that conversation. And then we'll go into the 80-page PDF you had in your packet and talk through any questions you have about the development code. So first of all, mobility-friendly. I did it, dig it. Mobility-ready units. Okay, so. So we talked about really where the conversation, as I would sum up where the conversation was at last work session, is it 10% or something more? Is really where the conversation was. There is still some consideration and maybe something lower, but generally sounded like the conversation, is it 10% requirement or something more? So did some more number crunching. And really thought about the fact that we ended up with 16% and plus, probably 16, 17% of mobility-ready units in Villebois without any requirement. So wanted to look at even if we didn't have a requirement, where we may be at? And then where we would be at with the requirement plus any, for lack of a better term, overage. This particularly comes into play with the, as you may recall, when we talked about the Villebois example, most of those units are elevator-served apartments or ground-floor apartments. That's really what we're talking about and what we were comparing to. When you actually consider those 125, at least, elevator-served apartments on the commercial Main Street, not all of those are able to be counted towards the minimum. Based on, I'm estimating, of those 86 would not count. So you would take whatever you're requiring, that 160, and add at least another 86. So actually, you're looking at the actual minimum is, would be around 15%. So staff recommends this as a good balance. You're getting that higher amount, but also you're accommodating those situations where, right? It's pretty easy to meet this when you have a lot of multifamily. And it was, but where you're in an area where it doesn't call for multifamily, you're urban Form 2 and 3 maybe, that it will be more, you know, difficult to meet because you're going to have to add an ADUs or primary admin units or things like that, or cottages, which we do want to encourage. But we also generally, during the master planning process, we talked about we didn't really, while we were allowing multifamily, we weren't doing anything to specifically encourage per se or require multifamily units outside of, we knew that there'd be vertical mixed use on the commercial Main Street. So with that in mind, I'd still recommend that 10% because overall with that vertical mixed use, you'll get more 15%. But that's also, as we've tested it, something that's doable in the other areas that may not have multifamily. So I will stop there in my explanation and open it to any questions or comments regarding this, this mobility-ready unit threshold. Or percentage requirement.
Questions or comments?
I'd have one question. If you, if we were to decide tonight, you know, this is going to, been thinking about this a lot. You know, we're kind of chasing things around and it's, you know, we'll make a decision now and two years from now, things, you know, the environment will be different. If we were to lock in 10% now, is there opportunity to change that in the future or update or?
Yeah, so this goes for beyond this, right? Once it's written in code, I mean, there's no necessarily, what? Let me back up. What I can talk to is what I know is in the city's work plan that may be able to touch this, right? We, what we know is that that nothing will really be built out here until the Beckman Creek sewer interceptor is built, which won't be until, still a couple of years out. So we also do plan on doing some level of residential code update following, as implementing the housing production strategy that will be, that will be, if there's recommendations in that housing production strategy, we plan on doing some residential code work. And if there, particularly if that shows like, if this work with Housing Our Future shows a specific need of something or brings up more data, then it would, that would be an opportunity and opening there to make some changes consistent with what's found through that project prior to any construction actually happening out there. That said, you know, once it's adopted, it is adopted. And I don't want to discount that fact.
Wrong. Mr. Heberlein?
Sure. Dan, I appreciate the explanation and the additional information provided in the staff report. I'm okay with the code minimum at 10%, given that it looks like there's a realistic chance that we will see something more than that in, as it actually built out.
Thanks. Okay. Commissioner Hendricks?
No questions for me. I'm supportive of the staff recommendation. Thank you.
Commissioner Constantine?
Dan, so your recommendation is 10%, correct? Okay. I think we all share a desire to make sure we all have enough mobility-ready units. I think that's all what we're concerned about. And I think you've articulated some negatives as we increase that number. We also have to worry about the economic feasibility of these codes. So I'm supportive of staff's recommendation at 10% also.
Anything else? Yes, Commissioner Semenova?
I think that's a reasonable recommendation.
Okay, thank you.
And I am in agreement. Yes, I think it's reasonable.
Carry that forward. Next, I want to talk about the small unit threshold, which can briefly summarize the discussion. Is there still, do we go with? We're requiring 5% of units to meet this small unit threshold, which I do want to reiterate that we're talking, by design, is not a huge number. So we're talking pushing, kind of pushing beyond something, recognizing this is something that hasn't been delivered much in the market at all. And so it's a relatively small amount. What we were lacking, I mentioned, is permit data about the size of units and that I was working with other staff to get that. I was able to, thanks to help from Sarah Pearlman, our Assistant Planner, and others, able to get access to data about permits over the last number of years. I found the permit data from 2017 to 2020 in particular very interesting because this was an area, this is a period where there is a lot of variety being built out in Villebois, where there's quite a few townhouses, a number of detached homes and other units being built in Villebois. So what was interesting about this and particularly interested in where the square footage of a lot of these townhouses, particularly like the three-story townhouses you often see in Villebois, where they were landing. In that permit data, we found about 20% of those units actually fell between 1,200 and 1,500. So that was being delivered by the market without any requirement. But it is those units less than 1,200 that were completely missing from that build-out during that period. There are a few smaller units, particularly again in the multifamily, as well as some, there's some ADU-type units and condos in the Village Center that were built previously that do exist out there. But during this build-out of like the bulk of the neighborhood, that wasn't. So that said, that helped push the discussion back to the 1,200 threshold because really that seems like a threshold where there's a target, there's a missing unit type that we are trying to get to. If we raised it to where a lot of the townhouses would qualify, we wouldn't get those other smaller unit types. So based on that, the information's now leaning towards supporting the 1,200 square foot threshold. So I hope that helps with that conversation and interested in additional thoughts and feedback from the commission on this question. Happy to answer any questions you have, of course, as well.
Questions, comments? Who wants to start? Commissioner Heberlein?
I'm in agreement with the 1,200 square feet. Thank you.
Commissioner Constantine?
So Dan, the data analysis is great. I mean, that's good information to have. And as you say, it sort of finds that missing unit type. So that's good information. Again, I think we all share the premise that we're trying to make homes more affordable. That's a challenge here. But I like the assessment that you've done and sort of your willingness to reassess your position. So I'm assuming that's staff's recommendation is 1,200?
Yes.
Okay. And 5% of, is how many homes? Do you know roughly, 5% of what?
5% of 1,500, so 75. Not talking a lot.
I support your position. I appreciate the analysis. Thank you.
Commissioner Hendricks?
Yeah, I echo what's been said, so I'm supportive as well.
Commissioner Skoll?
I'm supportive also.
Commissioner Semenova?
Likewise, they'll provide the variety that we're looking for.
Likewise, they'll provide the variety that we're looking for.
Okay, thanks.
And yes, I agree with the 1,200.
So let's go then into the code amendment review. And specifically, so for that, I'm going to exit out of the PowerPoint and I'll actually bring up
Into the infinite world.
The document. Give me a moment to share that. There's a lot of information in here that's hard to get onto a slide. So not a lot of pretty colors, but let me, I also have bookmarks to get to where we need to, so we're ready for that. But wanted to start, I have some things that I can highlight, but wanted to start with specific questions you have. I can, so we can kind of go around what those are. I know Commissioner Heberlein, ahead of time, had a specific question that, it was a good question that I can clarify, but we can start with that or if there's others who want to start with, I'm happy to.
Why don't we start with his question first?
So his question was regarding, back to Table 6B, which again is the table that establishes all the minimum unit types and, and such. There is, and there is a lot of footnotes that are important, policy things, and he had a specific question about footnote A, which is a rather long footnote. And I agree, this one can take, this is from experience and just trying to think through how it might be used on the ground. So it goes back to, for those commissioners that have been around, our discussion during middle housing about that definition of detached duplex or cluster housing, where essentially the concept is that you can put two detached units on the same lot, right? So what we've seen in Frog Pond West in reality is particularly for those lots that are larger, like 8,000-square-foot lot, what ends up happening is they put two houses that would otherwise go on a 4,000-square-foot lot and do a middle housing land division, and you have two parcels, but I mean, unless someone's really looking at the plat or is aware, they look and feel and smell like any other detached home, right? So the concern was, based on that experience, that a develop, if, without this footnote, what could happen, I would suppose happen, if you're in an area where a developer primarily wants to do detached homes, you're like, well, you need another unit type here. If we allowed that type of unit, I described where you just take a larger lot and divide it and build two detached homes to count as middle housing, then that would likely be their default to get the required middle housing. So this footnote essentially disallows that and saying that in order to not, that that scenario would be considered the same as just a detached single-family house on its own lot. And that really, you have to, you know, not have them both facing the street or have some unique configuration that truly makes them cluster housing or something different to actually be called middle housing and qualify as middle housing units for the variety So that, I mean, really the test, it needs to be dissimilar to a detached single-family house, such as, you know, not actually having a frontage on the street or imagining like when we first allow this, like in an infill situation, it'd be like you're building another house in your backyard. So that second house actually is not on the street, for example. Those sorts of scenarios could still count as middle housing because that's the true intent of why those standards were put in there. Does that help? Commissioner Heberlein?
Yes. Yeah, it, it's easier with, with that explanation. So in the scenario of having a detached single-family and a small home, a 12,000-square-foot or less, would that qualify as middle housing? With that, because it's still detached single-family in both cases, so would that apply or not apply towards middle housing?
So if they were both up, like facing the street, that would not count as middle housing? But if it was the size to be classified as an ADU, that, then half of the parcel could be, count as an ADU as another unit type?
Okay, so an ADU size would, but a small home would not?
Correct.
Okay.
Commissioner Constantine, do you want, have comments or questions?
No, this is detailed and it's long and I don't have nearly the experience that some of my colleagues do, so I'll defer to you to provide direction, but boy, there's a lot of depth in, in this information, so.
Okay. Commissioner Hendricks?
No, I don't have any questions, but I, it's just, it's cool to see the things we've discussed, like coming to fruition in a document, so that's exciting and, yeah, just appreciate like reference to like removing redundancies and just like cleaning, getting to clean up the document too is satisfying. But no, nothing, nothing, no questions.
Commissioner Semenova?
I don't have any questions.
Commissioner Skoll?
No questions. I'm probably in the same place that Commissioner Constantine is. It's new to me and I'm about 10 pages in and it is complex, so it'll take a little bit of time to, to dig into it, but I'm, I'm good with what's there.
Okay. I got a question for you.
Okay.
Do you want to do page numbers?
I can do page numbers.
Okay. I'm sorry?
I can certainly do page numbers.
Page five. So we're talking about form type and we specifically mentioned Form 1, Type 1 and 2, but we make no mention of Type 2. Do we need to include anything? It's talking about the difference between the urban forms with Type 1 having the most urban look and Type 3 having the least. Do we, do we have to put anything there about Type 2 or is that just a clarification of how it's going to go from small to large?
Yeah, I mean, writing that, and granted, I have too much understanding of this to some extent, but that really describing kind of the, the range that it could be and assuming, okay, if there's 1 and 2 that you read into, that there, 1 and 3, that there's something in between.
Yeah.
But, and I've written it with, with referencing Type 2 as well. It gets a little long, essentially saying Type 2 is somewhere in between. But if, if that would provide more clarity, I, I could see an argument where that could provide more certainty and clarity, so it could be added.
Okay. Page 6.
Let me just add a note here for myself.
So this is the administrative review of multifamily structures. Is the idea behind this review?
PDF page 6?
Oh, PDF page 6, yes, sorry. Yes.
I think he's saying page 6 of 80 at the bottom, so it's 25.
80, yes, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
I think it's a, yeah, the next.
Yes.
Is this, is this modification designed to simplify our definition of multifamily? Is that?
So our, our definition of multifamily was revised when we did the middle housing code work recently, so I hadn't proposed any changes to that definition.
Okay. So this is just cleaning up to redefine that, all right?
Yeah, it's more about defining the process, review process.
I think I just need, I had trouble reading my way through this. Can you just give me the executive summary? That, that is the one? Okay.
That was the one I had questions on.
That was the one you had questions on? All right.
All right, based on that, I will see if there's, I mean, I'll contemplate if there's a way to more simply state that to get to the same effect.
I was reading that in my head. One eye was going one way and the other was going the other way and then my head started turning around, so.
Well, I mean, if that's, I, you know, other staff and developers may have the same experience, so I will consider if there's a way to some, to reword it. And I'll, particularly I'm having our other staff re, review this right now as well and I will see if they have any.
Somebody who's not as close to this as you? Yeah. Page 57 of 80, and it's just a comparison between page 57 of 80 and 58 of 80.
Okay.
You've got those beautiful graphs, visuals, which I really enjoy, but the one on 58 has some language as far as the square pickets may have spear ends and the brick wall has to be six inches thick with a stucco cap. None of that language is on the one on page 57. Does that, I thought just for clarification purposes, we want the wall to look the same, pretty much?
Mm-hmm. Yep, we can move that. I'm not sure, different renditions, why, why that was. I think the, the designers that put together these images were probably looking at example images for this one. They already had these labels on it, so they just carried that over.
I like, I do like it. I like the look of that.
Okay.
And then on page 78 of 80?
Add a comment here. I'm just going to reference where it came from real quick, till my memory later. Appreciate it. Okay, so what's the next page?
Page 78.
78. Okay.
We changed, eliminated the word board and put in the city, but then two other times later in that paragraph, we call it the board again. So are we the board or the city or does it matter?
So where we do that later, I think it, it's okay because the board or planning directors, so that covers every potential review process.
Yeah.
Be it, you know, a Type 1, Type 2 or Type 3.
Very good. Commissioner Heberlein, you have more?
Yeah. PDF page 75. Specifically D2C. And Dan, this is one of them that I had emailed you about.
Yeah, and I've, I've noted all those and made the corrections.
Yeah, so the, I think.
70, 75, you said?
Yeah, page 75, yeah.
Could you clarify if there's a page, like blank of 80?
Oh, yes. 69 of 80.
69 of 80.
See, I think we're, yeah, thank you.
Okay.
So Dan, what I'm, I know your response said that this was somewhat to, to address the concern I had around the Fred Meyer development and the fact that we, we required main entrances to be street-facing, but then none of the actual entrances that are used for those businesses are street-facing. They're all blocked off, there's no access from those directions. So this is intending to prevent that from happening by saying that the primary entrance has to be street-facing.
Correct. As well as this is consistent with the requirement for dwellings throughout the master plan as well.
Could a, could a business still have a primary entrance be oriented to the street but blocked off, similar to the Fred Meyer area development and use the secondary entrance that is facing the parking area?
I think when this is combined with similar language throughout the zone and throughout the residential design standards as well about that mirror this idea of the main entrance facing the street, that, I mean, it is the main entrance. I think with the Fred Meyer situation, the fact that there's really ended up the design of Boon's Ferry, there wasn't on-street parking, there wasn't a lot of activity, that most pedestrian activity ended up on the interior, led to that. In this case, I mean, Brisbane does have on-street parking, is designed to be more, and there's a good possibility some of these tenant spaces won't even go all the way through, that there'll be like a back hallway or that, because the requirement is just the side-facing Brisbane, and those buildings may be deep enough that the tenant space actually doesn't go all the way through the building.
Okay.
So I, I don't see the risk as high here as it was like in that Fred Meyer development.
Okay.
And plus the consistency with the requirement throughout for all the development types in, in here that they orient, orient to the street rather than to parking.
Okay. And then last question, next page, which is 70 out of 80, which, so that's D7BI. So first four facade of all buildings shall be designed to encourage and complement pedestrian-scale interest with windows. I think that's the window one. BI. Oh, there it is, yeah, down at the bottom. Sorry, I was reading the wrong BI. Or it was AI. It's been a day. Okay, so Dan, what is the intent of the 60% of ground floor wall area being windows? Is that the intent of providing light into the building? Is that an exterior architectural variety thought process? I want to understand what the rationale is for, for the window requirement and then I'll have a follow-on question based on that.
Sure. So my understanding, again, this was pulled over from other similar standards, was, is that it's meant to create that look and feel of a storefront rather than like a residential, so it actually looks like a commercial business. And so it is more, I would, I would say, well, it definitely has function for, to bring light, light into the unit. I'd say primarily it's a streetscape type, an urban design element to, for the look and feel of the pedestrian commercial area.
Okay, so.
I would add, Commissioner Heberlein, is that part of this is because it's a main street, so the glazing and the windows creates the interaction between the interior frontages with the activity that's happening on the sidewalk and in the pedestrian realm. And so these glazing standards, particularly for the ground story facing southwest Brisbane Street, was pulled over from the Town Center code, which would also apply to the main street and Town Center.
Okay. So, and that's great, I appreciate that. So then, going back to the Fred Meyer development and the, the majority of all of the windows on the street-facing sides are filmed over or have some sort of blocking feature, is that acceptable in this, in this case? Does that meet the intent of what we're trying to achieve here?
A couple of thoughts there. First of all, we actually had standards for, for, to some extent, for the Fred Meyer complex, Old Town Square, to prevent that, but it's been very hard to enforce over time because of just the way the tenant spaces ended up being oriented, you know, if there's a restroom right there, for example, which tends to be in the back of a tenant space, right, you have to film it over. You have to film it over. So generally speaking, I don't see us really get into that level of detail in these standards. But generally speaking, just throughout the city where there's, where we don't address it specifically, you can put it on the interior but not the exterior. Really, that, the interior versus exterior is that plain, even like a sign, right? If you hang up a sign in your window on the interior, you know, it's exempt from the sign regulations, it's not a problem. If you start painting the exterior of your windows, then that's a sign that is subject to regulation. I mean, you have to draw the line somewhere, and that's really where the line's been drawn. And even if you do put that, like, the reflectivity of the windows generally remains about the same, so you do, you don't have that inconsistent look necessarily in terms of glazing as you would if you actually were putting different materials on the exterior of the windows.
Okay, so in a nutshell, we still run the same risk of having that visual, not maintaining a visual to be able to see from the outside in and vice versa. There's nothing that would stop a business from putting a similar film on the inside.
Film, or lines, or whatever, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Okay, that's unfortunate.
Yeah.
I'm not sure it really gets to the intent of what we're trying to get to.
I think it's more a question of.
I don't know if there's any way we can.
What extent do we regulate?
Yep.
And kind of a theme that we've been going with is being consistent with similar development elsewhere in the city. And so, right, if we had that sort of requirement, which, correct me if I'm wrong, which even in Town Center, we didn't really get into that level of regulation of what's on the interior of a window, and I would recommend that we be consistent with that.
I'd have to go back and double-check it, and we could. I would say that if the Planning Commission was going to consider any of that here, that it would be limited to the commercial storefronts.
Yes.
So that if you did have any ground-floor residential or live-work units, that there's more flexibility for those spaces for privacy reasons, especially during non-business hours. But we can double-check provisions, in particular in Town Center on the main street itself. It may have been in the design standards table and not in the window facades table, so we can double-check that and get back to you and let you know if you are going to, if the Commission wants to consider doing something here.
Okay, that would be great, I appreciate that.
Are we gonna have a similar live-work experience in Town Center on the ground floor?
Well, Town Center is very unique, in particular depending upon where you are and what sub-district you're in. We do not require retail on the ground floor of every building or even every street. The only place that we require an active ground-floor frontage is on the main street itself. So there definitely are likely going to be ground-floor units in the Town Center in certain areas. Along the main street and the intersection with Court Side, we will see active ground-floor spaces that are not primarily residential. I am not, I can't remember if we restricted live-work. You have to have an active space along the main street, I know that. But we will definitely see live-work and purely residential on ground floor in some of the buildings in Town Center.
And then, Dan, will we see this again before a public hearing? Or is this the last time we see the proposed code?
No, we'll still have June to discuss further.
Okay, I guess that's a good thing, I don't know. If, if going to the next one, if you can find a way to highlight the changes that are made from this version to the next one so that we can more easily differentiate, so that we don't have to reread everything.
Yeah.
That would be super, thank you.
Certainly.
Other comments or questions?
With your French, I would like to highlight a few things that may be of interest.
Yes.
Or particularly, like Commissioner Heberline was referring to, things that have changed that I would highlight. Let me get first of all to this notion of blending. We talked about this somewhat for, you may recall or may not, since we've gone through a lot of details, is for the mobility-ready units where, you know, if you have an excess in one sub-district, you can count that as a credit to a neighboring sub-district that may not have enough, as long as it's like right on the border of the sub-district. All right, so, after a lot of discussion, we were recommending that that concept be extended further to allow one of, one or the other, not both of the other target unit types, that being middle housing or small units, to also experience a similar flexibility where, you know, if you don't quite meet your middle housing standard in, in this sub-district and you're, you control both sides of the line, you can make that line essentially a bit wider and put them on the other side of the street. It doesn't allow you to like move them the other side of the sub-district, it really needs to be immediately adjacent there in order to take advantage of that. And as well, you have to have an excess of what you're required in the sub-district that you're borrowing from in the amount that you're actually getting a credit for. So, we did add that, a couple of things here, a couple requirements. First of all, that you still have to have like the three units, three types of housing units in each sub-district, that you can't change that. But for example, you may have three, like, three different configurations of multifamily potential in a sub-district rather than having, and meet your middle housing right over the sub-district line. So, that is a new change.
What sub-districts are we anticipating that to happen? In the smaller, broken-up ones or the larger ones?
So, it could be in both, so here's two scenarios in particular that's been in my mind that where this could really come into play. You've heard a lot of discussion about E4, which, without bringing up a map, is that, is for that property on the south side at, right at the corner of, sorry, in Frog Pond East at the corner of Stafford in Advance. Where there's, where West Hills has shown some scenarios where there'd be primarily multifamily there. So if they did that, they could meet that, that middle housing right over the border on that northern side in E5, right next door. Another scenario where I see it is when you get into, particularly the boundary between sub-district S, South 3 and South, South 2 and South 3, where this is where you have a variety of 2 to 3 to 5 acre properties that for some reason, a developer gets an interest in, you know, a 3 or 4 acre property on both sides of the, of the sub-district line, that they can blend a bit at the sub-district line. And that seems like a reasonable flexibility to allow in that situation.
So you're kind of anticipating that it would be one builder that's doing the borrowing between sub-districts?
Correct, the borrow, you can't borrow from another builder.
Okay.
This would be where your, your, your stage 1 area or your proposed development already goes across the sub-district line. So you don't get to come back and say later that, oh, this, this developer that built five years ago had an extra, can I borrow that? Right, this is just, when you're doing your stage 1 plan, which is where you're looking at the entire, your entire area that you plan developing, to develop, that if you have multiple sub-districts within that or cross the sub-district line that allow a flexibility. But again, it's limited to right on that boundary, kind of either side of the street, essentially.
Okay. Commissioner Heberline?
So, Dan, could you, does it, would this allow you, so if you had a surplus in, in one sub-district, you rolled over that surplus into the next sub-district? And that sub-district still had some of that type, could you roll the remainder over to the third sub-district if the development spanned three sub-districts?
So like a daisy chain type of effect?
Yes.
As long as it's on the border?
The intent is, is no.
Yes, I'm curious as to whether it would be allowed per the code.
So essentially, you'd have to, trying to think of how that would be.
So if you had to have 50 in one zone and you had 75, you could roll that 25 over to the next zone. If that zone required 35 and you already had 20 in there, you could then roll over 10. I think it's 10 at that point.
So essentially skip over the one in the middle too?
Yeah.
I'd have to give that some thought to see if, if the code really allows that or not.
Okay, yeah, I'd be curious.
Good thought.
I'd be curious to see if, A, the code allows it, because when I was thinking about it and thinking whether or not, A, I was okay with it, and B, whether it was possible. I wasn't sure about whether it was possible, but I think at the end of the day, I'm okay with it. So.
Yeah.
I think as, as long as, as the requirements, the overall requirements are being met, it seems reasonable to, to be able to shift a little bit in a given development.
Okay. Okay. Thinking through that one myself.
Yeah, I'll take a few more brain cells to really.
Because there could be situations where you've got three sub-districts that are like touching at a corner.
Yes.
And you could.
S2, S3, and S4, if you had development throughout, you could, yeah.
Yeah, because you're on one side of the street in one sub-district, you move to the other side, you're in District 2, and you moved back to the other side just north of there, and you're in Sub-District 3. Yeah. Good. You're good. Any other comments, questions for staff? All right?
I did want to just, so, this has been more a council-level discussion about the narrow side yards. I just wanted to check in with the Planning Commission, we've touched on it lightly here. Any questions or concerns without approach?
Mr. Commissioner Heberline?
I was just gonna say, do you want to give a high-level summary for anybody who may not be well-versed in side yards?
So essentially, the concern that has been raised is that particularly in Vilwa, there were some scenarios where essentially you ended up with like a 3 or 4 foot side yard, let's say, where it became, they essentially didn't have access or was a dead end, wasn't really usable for anything, was like on the inactive side of the house. So, you know, no really motivation to maintain it, so it tends to collect junk and grow a lot of blackberries and things like that. So, the idea is, so there's been some, was some discussion about really getting into the detail of when there's fences, when there's not fences, and, you know, disallowing fences in some scenarios, which we wanted to, we, we, staff didn't encourage because we know even if you disallow a fence, it's gonna be, you're gonna be chasing that forevermore. If it's a situation that the general person would think, a fence belongs there. And generally, we don't, we don't permit fences, so fences can just pop up anyway. So acknowledging that, try to really kind of tailor what, what was the specific issue, and it was about the maintenance of these areas? Because, you know, one approach is, okay, well, you shouldn't allow side yards to be that narrow. Right, and, and there's a couple of situations. Oftentimes, when you get the narrow side yards, you get a situation where you have one side active, where, you know, you, you essentially have an easement over a portion of the neighbor's properties to use it as your active side, and then they have the easement over the other neighbors. That's not always the case because of orientation, when you get, you can't get where you have two inactive sides facing each other. So there's that, but then other times, you are just going to have it fenced. And you don't want to necessarily disallow that because of different orientation of buildings and as well as efficient use of land. I mean, when you're building detached homes, you don't want to overly increase in certain sub-districts, particularly certain design considerations that, that space between the buildings because that's land that's, could be put together and create more housing, for example. So, there's some real practical reasons for having these narrow side yards. So, it really came down to the issue then, okay, what can we do to encourage or require maintenance? One notion that came to ser, that I think is common sense, but is that a morin area is used generally, the morins maintained if it's within, you know, because if you're walking through it, you're like, oh, I really should. Okay, we've all been here, like, if you have a side yard that like you never walk through, there's higher probability that it's gonna grow weeds. But if you walk by it all the time, it's like, I really need to pull that weed, right? So, so that notion that if you're passing through it, then usability goes up and maintenance goes up. And so that's one part of it, and the development code, that's what applies citywide. When you have those narrow areas, essentially, the, the concept is you have to have like a gate or somehow allow passage through that narrow side yard to a rear yard or an alley to, to increase the usability, so it's not just a forgotten dead end. The other component of that is if, you know, someone decides it's a great idea to plant arbor vida in a 3-foot wide yard, right? There's something in the code that can address that issue that maybe the CCRs didn't think of, or has become a nuisance, or, and so recommended adding some language to the nuisance ordinance, which is generally outside of the Planning Commission's purview, to essentially saying if you have ju, those typical nuisance things, you know, junk, weeds that are blocking that passage, then that's enforceable under the city's nuisance ordinance.
Comment?
Commissioner Heberline? Only because you brought it up. So, on page 14 of 80, I believe note E is, is one of the things that you're talking about, the when fences are creating enclosed side yard area 5 feet or less in width.
Correct.
That a gate or other opening shall be provided. So the "or less", what is the minimum that it could be? A foot? What's, what's the minimum?
Generally, 3 and 1/2 for building code. Usually when you get less than 3 and 1/2, it's, I mean, the economics don't work out because you have to increase the, the, the construction costs go up substantially because you have to start fireproofing that wall and that eve.
Okay.
And so generally, what we see is 3 and 1/2, or the fire code. Like 3, 3 and 1/2.
So at 3 and 1/2, you'd have to have a gate or some other opening to be able to get through that area?
Yeah, I think in general, especially if you have like a string of detached houses that are 3 and 1/2, you're going to have that active-inactive sides.
Yeah.
But.
Okay. All right, I'm good.
I have a question, Commissioner Skol. So, isn't the control maintenance and the management of those side yards in, in instance of this activities that you're talking about, you know, you can accumulate rubbish, whatever, isn't that managed or the responsibility of the HOAs under the CCRs?
Oftentimes, and this is generally with the, I mean, generally speaking of the nuisance ordinance, is that the HOA has more active patrol and stricter rules than the city. And so generally, where there is an active HOA, that they generally address that type of issue. However, the city's always had, you know, like tall grass and that if there is a severe issue and someone complains that there is, there is code that can be acted upon. You know, the difference being, you know, an HOA may, may force you to mow your lawn if it's like an inch tall or something, right? if it's like an inch tall or something, right? The city wouldn't force you to mow it until it's like two feet tall and like dried out in a fire hazard, right? So.
Well, I would have just, I would have assumed that the, the code itself would dictate the, the gap, the min max on the gap between the houses, and then basically the setback for the fence, and, you know, that would be, and then it would just move on to a nuisance code or an HOA, a CC, a CC and arboral of the, of something of that sort.
Yeah, and oftentimes, these side yards, particularly like if it's between townhouses, do have like shared maintenance and shared access, and the, and that gets into the different maintenance. But, so, you know, nine times out of 10, that's going to be the case, but these few scenarios where that hasn't been the case has brought, has brought, uh, a need to, you know, probably this won't be used a lot, but to address some scenarios that have come up where that hasn't been the case, and some additional action may need, be needed.
Okay. Your thinking, are you ready?
Fine. So, but the, the nuisance code, as it is written, would still allow you to have rubbish, junk, other materials, as long as you still had pedestrian access. So if I can walk through my pile of junk or weeds, it's still okay. It doesn't meet the nuisance code criteria.
It's really a severity question, right? If, if you're keeping your old microwave in your side yard until ju, until this weekend and, and debris day at Republic Services, large debris day, then yeah, I mean, you're probably gonna be okay as long as your HOA is not, is okay with it. But, you know, if you really have a pile that's, that's attracting, that's entirely blocking it, you know, weeds are growing over your fence, or, you know, that's causing rats to be running through your neighbor's yard, right? That, that would be actionable. And so I, yeah, it's really, gets where it's severe enough that, you know, the neighbor's complaining and it's a clear, that any, any, you know, judge of the law or something would clearly see that it's an issue and that it needs to be addressed.
Sir, are we saying there's nothing in the nuisance code right now that would address that scenario of?
So the nuisance code does address generally those, those items, like, you know, you can't have a fire hazard, you can't have a pile of, you know, your discarded food that's attracting varmints, right? That, you can't have various things. But this is really where, outside of that, that that's actually blocking this passage. And so essentially, where you start, you, generally in nuisance, and maybe we're a city attorney, hopefully I don't get too off here, is there's factors you, you consider, right? There's a number of factors you start considering. So essentially what this does is if one of the, the fact that it's blocking one of these required passageways comes one of the factors that ups the severity of the nuisance violation. So, right, maybe there's a couple bags of garbage that if it was just sitting in the middle of the backyard, would it rise to being actionable by the city? But the fact that it's entirely blocking the side yard, then that becomes actionable by the city.
The side yard that is of benefit of the homeowner who has the junk, not the neighbor? I'm just trying to figure out what problem we're trying to solve that isn't already addressed in the nuisance code.
So specific cases has been where like trees have been planted in the side yard that are growing into the neighbor's yard and just creating a nuisance. And particularly weeds that are overgrowing the fence and things like that, that probably otherwise may not be severe enough. But I think the most important part of this is the fact that you're increasing the use of that yard so it is maintained. I think in most cases, just having that use of the yard is going to take care of the issue, but as we discussed at a council, there was support for putting this additional provision.
Okay. I'm unsure of the value, but I'll leave it at that.
Okay.
Other questions and comments? Anything else? Staff?
We touched on this, but I just want to call it to attention that we did update the drawings of the fences before it was just a brick wall, and now it's a shorter brick wall with the, with the metal on top along Stafford, which essentially, this is exactly half of what's essentially cut every dimension in half, when you're talking. So, yeah, you're cutting, sorry, you're cutting all the dimensions in half from what's along Beckman and Stafford, and this is essentially what's shown here. And then this other one is even a shorter brick, and this mirrors what you see pretty commonly around a lot of units in Villebois.
I like the, I like the looks of those.
Yeah. One part that was recently added, I'd call your attention to, that's completely new, is the public realm elements, which there's quite a bit of detail in the master plan about this. So rather than, this is a scenario where it made more sense to just reference the master plan than, than restate it here in the code. So those are, let me see if there's anything else that I'd really call your attention to. Oh, let's talk about the commercial Main Street. This one's important. Is, I have updated it to really define that 50% Brisbane frontage is required to actually be commercial, so we do get the commercial as called for in the master plan. That's been further clarified. We also reworked how the residential units, rather than, so you've seen that, so this was changed significantly to really get to the fact that residential, all residential units are generally allowed, and these are the circumstan, and these are the limitations to that broad allowance, rather than trying to list everything that's allowed. It made more sense to go the other way, I think, in this scenario.
And this is how we get variety?
And this is all related to that variety, that you're allowing all these unit types, which then are guided by the variety standards. And I will leave it at that unless there's other specific questions. I know there's a lot in here. Next month, what the plan is to come back, we'll really talk about kind of some broad themes about housing and how this really is a housing plan. We'll be having our annual housing report on next Planning Commission as well, and so we'll carry some of those themes into how housing works into this, and what are some of the housings, you know, what does all this mean in terms of the housing that's actually going to be produced? And then we can get into any other additional details, and we'll provide any updates of the code that may occur as we continue to refine it over the coming weeks.
Excellent. Any other comments or questions? Yes, Commissioner Semenova?
I had just one, and I don't know what the traffic is like oftentimes on Stafford and with us changing it to the non-all brick. Does that cause any issues for the people that would be living there with sound?
That's a, a great question. So, in the design, and I can bring it, I won't take time probably to bring it up right now, but essentially you have the, the travel lane, and then you have a wide planter, then you have a 12-foot sidewalk, then you have a setback at the wall, and then another setback before your unit. So you're quite a ways with landscaping in between before you get to the front door from Stafford. It's not like you're right up on Stafford, like you'd be on like, let's say Barber Street or something.
Okay. Yeah, I see, I see a lot of the homes needing to plant the trees, some kind of, something to probably get more privacy and, and block out those, those sounds from busy streets.
Yeah, and I mean, the two foot, the two foot plus the metal on top, I mean, that is, for, as front yard fences go, I mean, that's pretty substantial. And there was concern that just a brick wall, I mean, that totally closes, gets to, I mean, why even have it facing, at some level, why even have it facing Stafford if you're totally blocking off with a brick wall? So, good thought though, because, yeah, I think that would be, if you have such a busy road that you're right up against. So probably, I'd guess you're at least from the travel lane, at least like 30 feet back, if not more?
Okay.
Doing a quick math in my head, which may not be perfect, at 7 o'clock at night.
All right. Thank you, staff.
Thank you.
Do we have public comment? So time does permit, the commission to take public comment on this work session. Commission asks that public comment be brief and specific to the aspects of the project under discussion tonight, as presented in the pack of material and not general in nature or on components of the project, not the subject of tonight's work session. As you are given the opportunity to comment, either in person or via Zoom, please state your name and address, or state that your address is provided on the testimony card, and then present your comment you would like to the complaining commission regarding the manner before them. Please do your best to speak clearly and directly into microphone, so other participants are sure to hear your comment. After each participant's comments, I will ask the planning commission if they have any questions for the speaker. Thank you. Before I call for a comment from the audience, are there members of the audience who wish to have comment, who have not yet filled out the comment card? If so, please fill out the comment card. Do we have anybody on Zoom?
I have no hands raised.
No hands raised, excellent. All right. Dan? Come on up.
Good evening, Chairman Carr and fellow planning commission members. Dan Grimberg, West Hills Land Development, here for our weekly visit, or monthly visit, I should say. We do come to the city weekly, I'm very good friends with the security people here. But anyway, I just like, I know you've spent a lot of time in studying all this, and I, I don't know how you do it, it's, I can barely do it, and I have to do it. So I appreciate that you're volunteering for this, and I know it's a tough job, and there's a lot of details. And for those of you that are new to this assignment on the planning commission, I don't think it gets any tougher than this. I've been doing this a long time, and I've never seen more complicated code. And I know it's with good intention. I am concerned about some of the effects. In the development world, we need flexibility. There's changing economic conditions, market conditions, consumer demand, all kinds of things, right? We're managing a lot of factors, and, and we build a product and hope it sells. But we do a lot of work trying to determine what that is that will sell and what the public and the, and the market wants. So I get concerned with so much being required. I mean, there's not much that's not required here, so there's very little left for flexibility, and that's not good. Because this is a long-term plan, and things are gonna change. And I think you asked that earlier, what happens when something changes? Well, it's really hard to change code. You know, like I say, you can come in for an adjustment, variance, all that. That's very sketchy, like, will that ever happen? Who knows, right? And a developer has opportunities across whatever market they're in, and where are they gonna, you know, put their risk capital? And so they look at all these things. And we talked, you know, we're in contact with builders, we do land development, we sell lots, we build houses, we do it all. It depends on what the conditions are at the time. So anyway, I'll get off of that, but flexibility, please, when you're looking at this, think, how does this get implemented? As an, I'll give you, I think I've got four examples here, and I'll make it fairly brief. So on page 51 in your spare time, take a look at that table 6B, and you'll see that there's required minimum number of units. So we've been working on this probably a year and a half, and we're very concerned what's, what are the numbers? I mean, that says you've got to hit those numbers, that's the minimum for that subdistrict, right? So we've been, as we've shown you our plan previously, as an example of what we think can be done with the Azar property, which is 80 acres, which is probably the largest parcel that'll be developed within Frog Pond East and South. And we had a plan that met it. We came down yesterday for our weekly meeting, and there was no, it wasn't really highlighted like you went through the areas of the code that changed there. Mimi Dukas of AKS went through in detail in that table and noticed that in E5, the minimum number of units went from 214 to 244. That's 30 more units. There's not room for 30 more units with the mix that we have in that area. So again, and the reason, we didn't get through the full discussion, so that's still being discussed, I hope there's a resolution that's satisfactory for everyone, but the reason was because of the impact of stormwater and the treatment. And if you look back in your notes, I know Commissioner, Commissioner Constantine mentioned something that I talked about stormwater. And we kept being concerned that the stormwater management plan was gonna have an impact on density, okay? And I believe the explanation that we got yesterday was the stormwater code, without saying that exactly, that the stormwater, instead of being a 5% impact on the usable, buildable land, it was gonna be 10%, and therefore it increased the requirement in density on the higher density subdistrict, if I got that right, kind of, general idea?
Yeah.
My head was exploding, so I'm not sure it totally stuck. Because we've been working on this for a year and a half, and we thought we understood what was happening here. So, so that's something, again, as you're reviewing your documents, and I know you spent a lot of time on it, you might think about that. The second item I would like to mention is the mobility friendly units. You know, we want to provide housing to where there's a market. There's no real concrete numbers on people with handicaps or being limited on their physical abilities. I mean, those are kind of like, I'll grab that, and then I'll round it up, and then I'm gonna round it up again to make sure I cover it. Many areas are going with a, instead of mobility friendly, all of the unit has to be accessible, right? So it has to be on one floor. Many areas are going with mobility, visitable, visitable, which means I can get to the front door, wheelchair, crutches, whatever your situation, right? I can get to the front door. The, this code is much more restrictive in that the whole unit has to be on the main floor. You know, another way to do it would be even to say that a bedroom has to be on the main floor, not the whole unit. That is extremely restrictive, and what need are we trying to meet? To me, it's not clear that that demand, if there is a demand, will be met by these, forcing these type of units to be built. Third item would be the definition of a small unit. I mean, we build a lot of houses, and I would say an average unit is probably 2,000 square feet. So in my mind, any less than 2,000 is a small unit. And to use the justification that in Villebois, there were no permits issued for homes less than 1,200 square feet, means there's a hole in the market and we need to build to fill that hole in the market. I'd look at it differently. I say there is no market. If there was a market, we would build it. And so, you know, again, our concern is we've got to build a project that is financially feasible. And so we're being told and directed that you have to build this kind of unit to a market that's very hypothetical. If there was a market for units less than 1,200 square feet, and the other factor that goes into that is, if it's a small unit on a lot, the cost per square foot is like very high, which makes it not very marketable. Maybe that's the reason they're not selling or not being built. That's enough of that issue. Four, when I talk about flexibility, this to me is, kind of hits it right on the head, on the retail on the Main Street. So there's a requirement that 50% of the street-facing facade be what I would call dedicated retail, okay? Right now, we have consultants, and we're not having a report to throw on top of you to, that would basically disagree with the study that was done for the city. But it's a, I guess I wouldn't say there's no market for retail, but it would be very weak. I mean, who is going to risk their money to build a building that requires retail on the main floor? It would sit there vacant if you were to get a market rent. There's, the demand is not there. And so not only does it affect whether someone would build the retail, but in the case of this plan, we have apartment units over the top of it. So if the retail doesn't get built, the apartments don't get built, and the apartments, because they're elevator-served, also serve the mobility issues, the small unit, all of it. It has a big impact. Our proposal was, because there's a weak market at this time, and we want to build it, but we would propose that that be live-work, so that initially, a small business can operate out of there. It would have, be built as if it were a retail space, in that it would have like a 12-foot plate line, it would have all the glazing requirements for a commercial building, it would have the access to the street-facing facade, it would have all those elements, but it would allow live-work to count towards that 50% retail, because if it's strictly 50% retail, it's not going to happen. The other way to do it that would be helpful, and I've talked to the city's staff person that deals with the vertical housing tax credit, for the, which, the vertical housing tax credit is a situation where property taxes are deferred, they're not deferred, they're just, for 10 years, you have a, what am I trying to say?
Abatement.
Abatement.
It's a partial abatement, depending on the floors of housing you provide.
Right. So that's a big, and they count live-work towards the retail, but this code, so we could get the vertical housing tax credit theoretically, it's not done. You have to get it approved by the city, and even there's many steps that you've got to go through, but that is a big issue. I mean, that, that's Main Street into this area, and is it going to stall out because of a retail requirement? Or could it be met for some period of time with a live-work situation, which would create the activity on the street? And I will give you, my final comment is, the city of Portland, just within the last, I think it was in December, passed what's called a regulatory relief package, and you might look that up on the internet in your spare time, and I don't blame you if you don't, but it might be interesting, is that what they did in order to spur the development of housing, they removed certain code requirements that were an impediment to the production of housing. One of them was the elimination of active use on multifamily buildings. And the reason was because it struggles. You can drive through a lot of Portland and see these new apartment buildings that have a requirement for retail on the main floor, and a lot of them are see-through glass. So if that's the case, what happens? It was a good intention, right? Create this active street scene, people are going to the little restaurant, going to the shop, going to whatever, and all of a sudden, retail turns bad. And so those spaces are vacant. Now what happens? The next guy's not going to go for that, because he sees what happened. And my other example on that is the retail market is very fickle. I, our office is in Portland, and I go to the same place for lunch until a couple of weeks ago when they went out of business, but in the Uptown Shopping Center off of Burnside, which you don't get much better retail than that, the deli went out, the liquor store went out, the pharmacy went out, the real estate office went out, the ice cream shop went out, all in the last year. So it's not like if you put retail there, it's automatically a success. So anyway, I apologize for rambling, but we're running out of time, and I just would like you to kind of see the other side. So thank you for your time tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Do, do the commissioners have any additional questions of staff? Commissioner Heverline?
I'm sensing a theme here tonight. So one of Dan's comments was around the unit requirements and the concerns around stormwater retention facilities. If those end up being, are those calculated as part of the gross development area? So that if those are larger than anticipated, can they use the recalc method in 4.12706C to adjust the minimum requirements?
Yes.
Okay.
And I will say, and we, I maybe didn't highlight this as much, or you may not recall, but I have mentioned that these numbers in 6B, that those will be refined as we, and we're actually working on that, it'll probably get tweaked a bit more, and it's really looking at, as we get more information, especially with the layout plans of what are realistic projections of units per acre, we can do a better job of like aligning and proportioning those numbers. So we are working through that, and so those numbers probably will change a bit more. But still, regardless, but I mean, that, the numbers that we're like looking at putting, assigning units to, and that excludes streets, it includes stormwater facilities, it includes, it excludes open space, it's just really that land that units can build on. So all those assumptions have been baked into it. But as you're saying, if for some reason you end up, your net is less than 70% of gross, there is a calculation where you can reduce your requirement.
Okay. So then I guess I would ask, is there a concern with that calculation? Do you believe that that's inadequate for adjusting based on need? And you'll need to come up to the microphone to respond.
And, and as you mentioned, we talked about this yesterday, and there will be, I don't have the specifics to share right now, but I, I think we will get to a point where things, where we're more aligned.
Okay.
Thank you. So what my response to that, if I understand your question is, so if there's less land to develop, therefore the requirement for the minimum number of units goes down?
Correct.
So we meet the code. The problem is it's a killer financially, right? Because we need density to spread the cost, to reduce costs, to make, you know, some money. So our idea is not to reduce the number of units. Our, you know, we want to make a great community, number one, but we also need density to make the financial formula work. So, you know, we have to meet the code, but that really, to say, well, then you don't have to have that many units, is like, that's not a good thing, right? Just to meet the code is not our intention. I mean, we need units to sell to make a profit.
Okay. So the concern is more the amount of stormwater facility requirement eating into the buildable area?
Absolutely. We've done some, you know, and we've had, AKS has done a lot of study on this, and they're, you know, off and on, it's tough to get all the right people together, but the stormwater code that was presented at one time by the city, they estimated that there was a 10% reduction in density. And the simple arithmetic, I think I had mentioned this in a couple of previous meetings, was if we have 350 lots, and we lose 10% more than was anticipated, that's over 30 lots. If a lot is worth $200,000, that's $6 million. That doesn't work. And we keep saying that, and I don't know what's going to happen, but we're not kidding, it's a serious concern.
So, thanks for the clarification. Appreciate it.
And I'd also clarify on the stormwater, I mentioned this last time, is that there's also other code at work that's not under this commission's purview, right? There's the public work standards, that for the most part, even if we didn't put any of the stormwater code in, the same concerns and issues would be there. So it's really this, what the, what the stormwater code, in brief, what the stormwater code, and this text is meant to do is elevate that to everyone involved in the design process, so we're thinking through it as we're designing the subdivision and all the components.
And if I may add, Chair Carr and commissioners, and Mr. Pali, please correct me if I'm wrong, but I, we've been having a lot of conversations around stormwater, and so one of the things we did was look at recent developments, both in Frog Pond West and otherwise, in terms of land consumption for stormwater facilities, consistent with our public work standards and our code, and looking at how much land that was consuming as a part of the gross development acreage. And what we came up with was approximately 7% to 8%. And that is partly why we modified the assumption behind the numbers, that we originally had put 5% of the gross development acreage in, and rounded that up to 10, which is slightly higher than the 7% to 8%, but wanting to be conservative and make sure that we're accounting for that. So that is part of why you, you saw some number changes, but also why we're still working through that process to make sure that we're, that the assumptions are good.
Yeah, and some subsequent work, I mean, it was 7% to 8% at one point, but spoke to the fact that it is probably more closer to 10, so that's why we went ahead and went back into the unit allocation and changed that percentage, just based on additional more accurate information.
Questions, comments? Anyone else? All right. Thank you. That concludes the work session. Moving on to informational. Next on the agenda is informational item four, city council action minutes for April 1st, 315th. Any comments? Any questions? Any clarifications? Nope. All right, we're all good there. We have completed all the scheduled agenda items. Do you have a motion for adjournment?
I move to adjourn.
Second?
This meeting is adjourned at 7:31 PM.